All right, welcome everybody to the Village of Washingtonville Planning Board Work Session Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 14, 2022. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance of the Normal Sea of Rights.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and equalist will, liberty and justice for all.
We have one item today on the agenda, which is a public hearing. Our applicant is 61 East Main Street Associates LLC. 61 East Main Street, application for site plan and lot line removal, section block and lot 114-1-3.22 and 113-2-31 OR zoning district, with a proposed use demolition of existing multifamily dwellings, shed and garage, construction of two new 14,000 square foot two-story apartment buildings with 14 units each, with a parking lot and stormwater facilities, removal of lot lines to combine two lots into one single parcel. So I have previously recused myself from this application, so I will be stepping down, and our attorney, Ms. Midler, will take over.
Very good. So the first thing to do, we will need somebody to preside over the meeting in the absence of the Chairwoman. So somebody wants to make the nomination to elect the Vice Chair, we could do that.
Would like to nominate Richard Moore for vice chair.
I'll second that nomination.
And vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes? Okay, Richard, it's your meeting to preside over. I told the Chairwoman that I would just give a debrief to the, to the public here. Like I said, my name is Stephanie Midler from Lucine Trippier of Franklin Marone, where the attorneys for the planning boards. You're here today based upon an application for a site plan approval and lot line removal for 61 East Main Street. Everybody who has, who wants to speak, you have an opportunity to speak. Please just sign the sign up sheet over here with your name and address. That way I can keep track of all the comments and we can properly organize them. You will have three minutes to speak per person, I'll keep time. It's just a way to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak and it's conscious of everybody's time. That's, that's really it, so we can start. If the board wants to open the meeting, and I'll call the first person. Yes. Oh, thank you, perfect.
Should we open the meeting in public comment, or should we let them introduce themselves?
You can open the meeting from the public hearings, that way anything that they say is incorporated in the record.
Open the meetings in public hearing?
So a motion to open the public hearing, yes. I can't make the motion though, so who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Well, I second that, sorry.
I made the motion.
You made the motion.
I second it.
I second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Stephanie, did you want me to say anything about the project?
If you want to give any type of debrief, that's, that's.
I think if you don't mind, I'm, but.
Please, I think that's fine.
I'm, I'm gonna go over here where I hope that both the board and the public can hear me. You have all passed all over this room and up on the board, the schematics of what the project, proposed project is. But let me study briefly what is proposed.
Stephanie, who are you, sir? Who are you, sir?
Oh, I take it apart. My name is Brian Gibson, I work at the Frisberg, that's a law firm. And what they're, it's in a zone that permits.
And folks, I'm sorry, it's already difficult to hear, so if you could please keep any conversations to an absolute minimum, only and totally necessary, and silence your cell phones. That way we can keep it organized.
It's in a zone that permits development by, with 14 residential units and 14,000 square feet of office space. And I think that the theory of the, of the zoning is, is that you're kind of recreating what you have in the center of the village, which is commercial on the bottom, residential above. Our application before the planning board is to have only residential. And what we're proposing is to substitute for 14,000 square feet of commercial that we have, eliminate that development, and instead put in an additional 14 residential units. All residential units are two-bedroom units, about 1,000 square feet each. And I can say just generally that we meet the setback requirements and the other general requirements of the, of the zoning code, and that our engineer and the village's engineer are in the process of, of working out the engineering details, most of which I think have been acceptable to the village's engineer. There are outstanding items that the board should know that have to do with our engineer. Don't blame me on him, I'm just saying it's an engineering issue. He has to complete a wetlands investigation, and report back to you whether or not the property relies with any wetlands. I can tell you that it's in federal wetlands, not state wetlands. And he's in the process of doing it. Additionally, we're supposed to do an archaeological study to make sure there aren't any artifacts on the premises, and that's underway, but when we found out that we had to do it, it, it just takes more time than we've had to get it completed today. And finally, we're going to, there's an issue that's always present, that there's trees on the property and whether or not there's certain species of bats that can be affected by construction. And we're going to solve that problem by agreeing not to perform construction at any time that would affect those bats, which is the standard way to solve the problem. The, what we're asking the planning board today to do is to review this from a perspective point of view as to whether or not they'd be willing to approve a plan such as this. We still have to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals, which is, I think in essence referred to matter of fact to the planning board to review and report it. From our perspective, the plan that we're proposing is a better plan than would be otherwise permitted under the zoning orders. Primarily because if we had commercial on the bottom, which we could has as of right, we may be generating more traffic in and out of the site. We would be creating a situation where we would be creating a further stock of commercial and office space where there isn't much of a demand for that, and we'd just be putting a burden on the other commercial developments that are happening in the village and the existing commercial stuff. And also in addition, that we think, and as investors, our client thinks, that, and actually its statistics bear it out, that there's a large demand for residential rentals of this size that isn't being met within this area. And I think that we'd be having a better development that addressed that problem rather than creating a further problem with too much office space. So I apologize that I can't give you a more detailed presentation, but I think that this gets us in front of you. Unfortunately, our engineer, who was going to make the presentation tonight, called me this afternoon about 3 o'clock and told me he had just tested positive for COVID. So he can't be here, but I don't think you're gonna miss anything. I don't think any of your details are critical. I think you have a basic idea of what our application is about.
So I would also.
I'm, I'm not gonna respond to any comments tonight. You're gonna make your comments, and then we'll be back the next time we have a meeting. And let me address whatever questions you have.
I was just gonna note, before we get going, this is a public hearing session, meaning that the public has an opportunity to comment on the application, but it's not a Q and A session with the board, and it is not a public debate of any sort. So you make your comment, it will be heard, it will be put on the record, and it's gonna be considered by both the applicant and the board. Yeah, the board can ask questions, if you wanna go now, you can ask questions now. I do know that based upon previous discussions with the applicant, and my advice to the board tonight would be that there are still outstanding items. We're still waiting for Orange County Planning Department comments. So my recommendation that the public can know now is to leave the public hearing open to a date certain in the future, and that way everybody here will know of it. We'll also publish it in the official newspaper of the village, and we can continue it that way. So, cause also Mr. Morganti, the engineer, isn't here, so if some of your questions are engineering, you might have to defer it, but I would say.
Yeah, and we consent to keeping the public hearing open for that.
The applicant has previously, we have time with regard to any super regulation, time, time regulations, so.
Thank you, great. As previously discussed in other meetings, I brought up traffic studies and traffic, because that's one of my biggest concerns for that area. It's close to the entrance to Brotherhood, it's close to the bank, it's only a two-lane highway each way. We're putting a significant number of people coming in and out of that driveway with only one, ingressed at 94, making either a right or left turn, there's no other options. And there's trouble around a crosswalk being there, but there also with a blinking light, as I recall. I did receive the letter dated May 19th after the last hearing of the meeting we had, and I noticed that you referenced a study from 12/22 of 2021. I didn't see any data from that, in that study. And I also noticed that you referenced another study that was done this year, May 16th, May 17th.
Correct.
And I didn't see any data from that study in that letter either.
So Philip Greeley from the Cuyahoga Engineering Design. In the December 21st study, there should have been an appendix with the traffic data. We can provide that to you, that's the problem. The May 16th was an evaluation to look at the school bus traffic, because there was a concern about when the counts, even though the school was in session, when the original traffic counts were done, what the level of bus activity was. So the May 16th counts were taken to document the bus traffic and what was occurring relative to bus movements. We will provide the actual traffic counts to you. They're summarized in the report, but we'll provide the actual count data for you. And it also referenced the New York State DOT historical data, which I believe was attached as an appendix to that letter.
Yeah, that was the only data that was there, that was from, I think, 2014 and 2016.
Correct, that was just the historical showing the various, you know, DOT information. But we will provide you with all of the other account data that was collected. Okay?
Okay, all right, that's that question, thank you. There was also a subject for the school buses that came up, and where were they picking up, were they stopping in traffic both directions on that board, doing a pickup and drop off? So I believe we talked about referring that to the school bus department of transportation to see what their information was. Do you wanna make a motion to do that?
Was that done last meeting, or did it just discuss?
It was discussed, but I don't think.
We did, there was an email that I did, that we talked about how to get that done. It was supposed to be referred to the school bus department of transportation for their evaluation.
You can make a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion.
And I'm just, to be clear on, are you referring it to the school district? Or to the specific school bus contract there?
The response I got was that the school bus transportation department for their opinion or.
Okay, and that's within the school district, I'm assuming?
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we do that.
That's fine.
I'll second the motion.
Vote?
Aye.
So I can do that referral, and I'll write a cover letter to the school district explaining why we're looking for comments specifically, and then add the other general comments that they may have.
Okay, and I just have a few other comments, and even more brought up in the last reading. And I'm gonna, this is probably more to the engineer, but just to make it a matter of record, and reviewing the property design layout. I know you had two parking spots for every unit, which basically just makes it, but there were no extra. So if it snows, there's no place for anybody to put a car. It can't go on 94, there's really no place across the street. So I'm curious as to how we're gonna handle snow removal, without any additional spots for cars. There's no recreation facilities whatsoever on the property. So you're gonna have 28 units, two bedrooms per, with literally go someplace else if you want your kids to play outside. I think that's an issue.
And I will, under a New York State Village law, if the applicants show to the board that they cannot provide, if you, if the board makes a finding that there's going to be a requirement or, or a need for additional recreation facilities or parkland, and the applicant cannot provide adequate space for such parkland, then the applicant, the board can vote to do what's called a payment in lieu of parkland, at which we would have to reference the Village Code to see what the amount would be, and that would become part of the condition to the approval that they would have to pay into that, to that fund that sits in the village specifically for parks.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Board members wanna, you can hold comment, you can hold comment until next time, you can hold it until after, you hear some of the public comments. So again, just to remind everybody, you'll have a three-minute time period, and the first person I have is, I apologize briefly, and so ahead of time, John Impiano.
He said it right, thank you. I'm very concerned about the traffic in the center of the lot area. The way it is now, at the high-traffic periods, it can't handle what's coming in now. And you want, you figure two cars per unit if this goes up. I don't think we could take that additional. I don't know how you plan to redesign the 208 and 94 intersection. I was stuck in the traffic there a few days ago, and there was an ambulance call. The ambulance had to go into the all-left lane, and yet the cars coming out of 208, making a left turn onto 94, couldn't see that ambulance coming, so it was right for a head-on. And now you're gonna have additional traffic coming on, you're not gonna be able to handle it, unless you start moving the buildings that's at that intersection, and that's not gonna work, you know that? You can't do that. So how are you gonna handle the additional traffic?
Thank you for your comment. The next person I have is Audrey Green.
Yes?
If you could just stand up, that way your voice will project to everybody. Thank you so much.
I'm concerned about traffic as well. And now that I hear that they may wanna put stores in, you have empty stores in the plaza now, that you can't fill. What are we gonna want empty stores for? You know? It doesn't even look good, I mean, the plaza looks like it's, it's done. They don't, they don't take care of it. I want the stores empty, so I don't see building more stores. It's haven't.
Can we just address that briefly? I know it's sometimes.
Yeah, the applicant's gonna, so the applicant did not wanna address any comments tonight.
No, I don't, I wanna listen to what everybody has to say. And it was important to sue her, she's moved to me, so. No stores.
Stores. Yeah, there are no stores, so just so everybody's clear, the application is asking for 28 residential units, 14 per building. What they're asking for is per, per the zoning code, they are allowed commercial on the bottom and residential on top. They have gone to the zoning board of appeals, who has not yet made a decision, because they cannot do so until this planning board makes a declaration under CECLR. But that zoning board of appeals, which is also a village board, it's separate from this board, needs to make a decision as to whether or not they're gonna allow units, residential units on both the top and bottom, eliminating the as-of-right commercial units that they have. They are proposing all residential. Whether they'll get it is dependent upon the ZVA application and decisions that will be made. That public hearing is separate, and that information is available on the Village of Washingtonville website as to when their meetings are. Thank you. Eileen Ristivo.
I guess my biggest concern too would also be the traffic in Washingtonville. I've gotten stuck a few times here, just to go from weather rain to, to get to the light in town, it's almost 10 minutes. School buses, regular traffic, whatever. Doesn't happen all the time, but it does happen, you know? And our town is such a cute little town, you know? You hate to see it, just go to pot. I'm, I'm, I'm up here like 45 years now, and I love this town, and I love it just the way it is. I guess, you know, I, I guess I'm not great with change, but if it's good change, that's, that's fine, you know? But I just like our town the way it is, with our cute little homes and, you know, and to avoid a lot of traffic, which is already an issue now, you know? So I thank you for having this meeting and giving us the opportunity to say something. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I will just make one comment back, just to remind everybody. This is the Village of Washington, nothing, yes, you know anything, a lot of people I see call it town. This is the Village of Washingtonville, and even if you have a 10992 postal code, does not in fact mean you live in the village. You might live in the town of Blooming Grove. So this meeting is pertaining to an issue within the Village of Washingtonville, in that, in the confines of the village. So I'm not saying you do or don't live in a town, live in the village, just for future for everyone else in here, is this a village issue, not town issue.
Next person I have is Tom Sutani. Susan Wolfke.
Thank you, I'll try and speak nice and loud so that you can hear this voice. I have two comments for this. This project is of some condition to a lot line change. This is a precedent. If you allow this lot line removal, now allow further lot line removals anywhere in the OR district. So somebody can technically buy two houses on Main Street, come in here, ask for a lot line change, and you will have to grant it, because you're already granted it once, and now that person can come and do the same thing. You will forever change the face of Main Street. That's my first comment.
Absolutely.
My second comment is the stormwater runoff. The way the applicant has the discharge, it's into a holding tank that's gonna discharge directly into the Moonna Creek, which is an environmentally sensitive area. The second part is, if this goes belly up, who's gonna be responsible financially for maintaining that storage area? This village and these taxpayers should not have to, in the future, pay for that maintenance or that line that discharges into the Moonna. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to come in.
I'm glad that, I'm glad that you have supported your neighbors, but I will just say, let's, for pie purposes, we can't do that for a reason. Next person, Amanda Torres.
Hello, everyone. My fiance and I just moved there in October, and we love New York City. We love New York City because of the congestion. We've been coming up to, from here for the past five years in Hudson Valley. We fell in love with it. I can say that our home search was hard. There were neighborhoods that we went into that we loved, because we didn't like the congestion like Monroe. Now, I didn't leave Brooklyn to come back to Brooklyn to point out. We just did not. We're ready to take the next step in our family, and we wanna have kids in the same way how Elaine's been here for 45 years. That's what we need, everyone, we just enjoy the beauty of this town.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, it's just we need to move on. Eric White, Wa, Wa.
White, I'll second what you said.
Next person, Pedro Felcarin. Pedro? Woodfield Drive? Arthur Ferrer? Elizabeth Faro, Ferrer?
Yes.
Okay. This is William on Decker Drive. Can you just say your last name, sir?
Paul, M, D, A, L, M, E, R. Okay, on a traffic issue, I was on the MLS board for seven years as a driver, and getting through that intersection in 1993 through 2003 was impossible at some times. Very dangerous. I call it a horse and buggy intersection. That's what I can declare, so, but I have other issues here. Recently, aesthetics have been knocking on the doors in my neighborhood, asking, on Decker Drive, asking people, is there really?
I pause you for a moment.
Yes.
This is comments strictly to this application. You cannot make any comments towards the applicants or based on race or any sort of conduct like that. It's strictly to what you have on the screen here today.
Well, I did my research on, on everything that's going on down Monroe and Carver Stroll. How does that apply here? This is the beginning of the Carver Stroll Washingtonville here, I can see. It isn't gonna happen as long as I'm active, okay?
Do you wanna sign up, sir?
Yeah, I didn't really, I didn't have one real source.
Sandra Wishluge? Annette Schwedman?
I just feel the same about traffic.
Can you just say your name so that we can project your voice, thank you.
I just feel that it'll be too much congestion. As it is right now, we have, from going from 208 to that traffic light into town, it's a disaster right now, and I think it'll just make matters worse.
Thank you for your comment. We have John Bodes.
Yes, my concern has been addressed. I have two concerns, which is the traffic. 56 cars entering 94 and that intersection is going to make a headache for everybody, including those two officers back there. Second, future precedence is being set today, and it was addressed by this woman over here. And those are my two concerns.
Thank you for your comment.
I have Marge Sprague.
It's been Tom.
Yes, I, I don't know who wanted to go first.
I'm going.
Okay, Tom Sprague.
Question for you, is this open to everyone's apartments?
So the applicant has decided not to do any, any answers this evening, so I would encourage you to come back to the next public hearing, where I believe that they will be addressing some of the, some of the commentary that they're hearing this evening. They're just, this is a data gathering session.
Okay, and these 28 units, there's no buses allowed in there? Or anything bigger than a car for storage? We're not gonna have a storage place? That's my question, I mean, we're not gonna have a unit where we have a corner where we have about eight buses for anything? Is that correct? Or however many, however tight it sits?
So I, I'm seeing that they're writing down their questions, and I would encourage you to take a look at the plans next time. I could tell you just knowing the plans, there's, there's no storage, separate storage facility that's, that's at this time proposed, but I would.
Because right now, I see the house right next to them, it's for sale, now. Okay, now you already said it's okay to change the way the, the, what the lot light is. Now all of a sudden, do that, now we can take their, their house, because that's for sale. Now we're gonna have a bigger headache. So I just wanted to make sure, it's just for, I guess I'll have to come back in two weeks to see if it's open for anybody. Okay, so that's what I have.
Thank you for your comment.
Stephanie, I just wanted to say, we're, we're writing down everything that everybody's saying.
Yes.
And we're gonna have the record up again. We're gonna address the issues, but I'm gonna appreciate all of your concerns, and frankly, I think we have answers for it, so we'll be forward to letting you know.
Thank you, Brian. Ms. Frash, would you like to make your comment?
No.
Okay. Angelo Pomona. Grochter Terrace. Yes?
Angelo Walsh.
Yes, Angelo.
I sent an email to everybody. Everybody else sent, but I put in my email.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll make a note that you sent the email. I'll leave this up here because I believe it also wants to come up. Michelle Baco.
I'm sending an email.
Okay. Rain Fitzro. Ryan Fitzro.
Thank you. I have a, a few points that I'd like to address regarding the site plan. The first is that the property request in the lot is within the, in terms of a flood plain. Part of it's within a district, another part of it is in a hundred-year flood plain within the rising construction plan from Washingtonville. It's within moderate and high-risk area borderlining the extreme flood-risk area. And so frankly, regardless of what the zoning is, it's probably unwise to build new buildings in this zone. That's hopefully going to be one of that village, that the county, that the town, that the federal government is going to have to pay for at a later point. Going along with that, the current site plan has a lot of incremental services. So regardless of what the site plan would be, given the flooding issues that we have, it's probably not a great idea to allow, to just prevent water from soaking into the ground, especially by the creek. And it's designed with as much parking as it has, with as many vehicles as it has, is not, is going to do any favors for the village. The third point has to do with the existing structure. And so we've, we've had this conversation before with some application on North Street. I mean, to some degree, we've had some precedent that the village has, has looked at there where when we have an iconic structure from the town, and this house, sixty-one East Main, is an iconic structure in the middle of Washingtonville. That's worth saving for the town. It's part of the character of it, it's part of the character of the village. And it's worth saving as part of this community. And that should really be respected here as well. We're talking about what this site should look like in the future with any proposed development. It should keep the existing structure. For any structure that is enacted on this.